August or September, I just, as long as we're in person.
Okay. All right. Okay, and then the second part of this is, we have two board members whose terms will expire the end of September. And so, we need to, and that's Laura San- Ben.
Oh my gosh, you scared me. I thought we were talking about our school board.
No, 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 I'm talking about. I'm talking about the priest, I'm talking about the board's appointments to the CPP board. So Laura and Christine Fisher. And so, probably an assignment would be to ask administration to really invoke the process for that. So, and they, as, as I understand it, I do have a formal letter that I got from CPP. And I believe that they are eligible for one more three-year term. I believe it's three years. So, we, we would need to get that going. Okay. So that's all I have about that. The return to in-house meetings. Your response, Ms. Bolton, was timely. I was under the impression that the return was in July. Is it August or July?
Now. Carolyn?
Yeah. Yes, Ms. Bates?
Um, it's July the first. But there are two bills, I believe, in the legislature now to temporarily expand that to September. And the other one is to expand that indefinitely. And the city is advocating, like, just, or lobbying for an indefinite ability to use virtual, virtual meetings and voting virtually as we are now. So, my suggestion would, we could take a position, we don't have to, but we could. Or we could just wait and see what the legislature does.
Okay.
But right now, right now, it's July 1st.
Okay. So what is the board's pleasure? Would you like to wait to see what legislator, legislature does? Because July 1 is right around the corner. I don't want to be caught trying to fast pace, fast track anything regarding that. Mr. Messer?
You know, one thing we did, you know, we kind of laid low in July in the past. Gave the administration time off, et cetera. So I feel like that almost gives us another month of a buffer to find out.
Yeah.
And so, perhaps we could, you know, push it to August. That would be one idea to kind of be at middle ground. And we'll plan towards it, but stay on deck and see what happens.
Well, actually, that makes sense, given that we only have one meeting in August. So, might be worth it just to delay it. Any other thoughts about that? Ms. Bolton?
I have a couple of questions that maybe Dan can answer for us. We, we kind of know about the, the board meetings. But what about committee meetings? If, if we are not voting, is it possible that committee meetings would have to, are, do they, do we need to return? And I'm perfectly happy to do so. Are theirs different than board meetings since we don't vote and it's not a business thing? Or is it everything has to go back in person?
My analysis would be a committee is also a public body, a separate public body under the Open Meetings Act. The exceptions that were made this year were for voting could be done remotely and quorum could be remote. So, depending on what happens at a, again, a committee meeting, you wouldn't have a quorum if you didn't have people in person. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. But, so, to follow up, but for committee meetings, I think the issue is not about board members being at the meeting because you would have to be there for form. But in terms of bringing the public in, and the same holds true for if we decide to come back here. Having people here, we, I'm, I'm assuming there'll still be some socially distancing rules and all of that. Do we know anything else about?
Yeah, so the public needs a way to observe in the meeting. That's been done remotely and potentially it could continue to be done remotely. Even if we were to allow folks to return, you know, there's always been a limit. You know, we only have fifty-some spots in this, this building. So, I, I don't think there'd be, you'd be prevented from putting a limit on the number of people who, members of the public who could participate, personally observe the meeting.
Okay. And then other requirements like the format for hearing of the public. I mean, are, you know, and this is, I'm not asking us to resolve it today, but to think about it. Would people then, once we come back in-house, are people then required to be here physically for hearing of the public? Or will we still have virtual capabilities? Again, I'm just throwing those questions out there if you have a thought for us.
And I would just say, that's something for you to think about because it's completely within the board's purview to determine the public's ability to participate. So that's not subject to the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, Ms. Bowles?
Yes, I think for, for me, in, in regards to the committee meeting, what's the most difficult for the committee meetings for me is the public engagement, not necessarily the hearing of the public. And I don't know how to try to get back to that part because usually during committee meetings, public can be present, they can participate, they can ask questions. It's a little bit difficult to do that via streaming. And so, I'm, I'm missing that kind of part of committee meeting. And I don't know how to rectify, rectify that if we don't go back to allowing some public to be present.
Okay. All right, so what I'm hearing is that we might be getting more guidance about this through legislature. And then, there may also be some guidance locally or through the city or the health department. And we can just, but this is food for thought. So people need to be thinking about how we want to move forward with this. When, if and when the rules change. So are we good with that? Yes.
If, let's say we invariably have to have a meeting in July, at least that one, because administration needs us to pass on certain things. And we, just as long as we have a quorum, it's not like, but it is a notice meeting.
Yeah.
So if we have a notice meeting in July, it would have to be in person. And since it's a meeting of the board, the public, if it's, I mean, the public would have to be here.
What, what I'm hearing, Mr. Hoynes, say is that we need to decide that. If it's July 1, if the rules change, if the rules go back to we have to have a pub, our public meetings as of July 1, what I heard Mr. Hoynes say is that we can still make a decision to do virtual public or not?
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I was just going to throw out my, my vote for that. I mean, I think a lot of people have been able to plug into our meetings that otherwise maybe couldn't before. You know, irregardless of COVID or health reasons, but it's just difficult for some folks to get here and spend this amount of time, whereas it's much easier to maybe pipe in from work. We saw some folks doing it from work. And so, I think keeping some element of this.
Okay.
Is good.
I, I, I agree with you. It makes sense that we will be providing a broader access, but it's a management issue too. And so, we have to give some thought to how would we manage if people came in and if people were working. So that, that's just a concern, but I agree. I, I like the idea of having that as an option. Go ahead, Mr. Hoynes.
Sorry if my previous response was, I, I think that's right. I, I think you have the ability to control the, the, whether the public attends in person or views online.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else then about that? I, I see questions on people's faces. Ms. Bolton, did you have a question?
I think we would be hard pressed this year to not have people come in person. So what I'm hearing, what I heard Mike say, I think, was in person and this. Not just only this. I think, it's not just because it's, it's just people want to come back. And, and we'll look like we're keeping them from being here.
I don't think everybody will want to come back. That's, that's, I, I'm just being honest. It's like everybody's not going to want to get vaccinated. I mean.
And, and that's cool. I can buy that. But I, I just think it would be hard to argue we're not having people come in.
So we'll, we'll follow up and check out what's going on at, at the state level and all the guidance around and try to see if we can make some sense of this. Okay. All right, so are we ready to go to a resolution?
No, we're still, uh.
That's it? You, you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, are we at a point where we cannot be so separated and so, and start?
We just, I just, we just didn't have time to get it done. That's all. That's all. I heard the suggestion from last week. You're talking about here?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, it's just, we only have one day, really. So.
Okay.
We'll get it done. I, I don't know if everybody else, do, do people know what we're talking about? Yeah, that was the suggestion, is to bring us in a little closer. First of all, people have to be willing to do that. If everybody's willing, we can get it done. I'm not going to stop wearing my mask. Yes, sir.
So, so, you know, I, until, yeah, I, speaking with, as policy chair, I think, until, until we amend the mask policy, obviously, we should all, right, be wearing. And it's actually, it's going to be, I'm going to put it on the agenda for our next policy committee meeting to have a discussion about what our mask policy will be in the fall. So, which I think would impact then that.
Okay. It's been so long, I don't even remember what it was like to be closer. All I knew is that I shared a table with Ryan. And one mic, so. Okay, we'll, we'll work it out. We'll work it out. Okay. So we are ready to, we are ready for resolutions and it looked like, it looks like Ms. Bolton, you are presenting the resolution.
Yes, even the title will suffice. And if anybody doesn't know what this is, the treasurer is happy to describe what it is. See how happy she is over there? Okay, I would, it's my privilege to introduce a resolution authorizing the purchase of materials and services as needed for the district's 2021, 2022 school operations plan and determining urgent necessity and exigent circumstances exist due to COVID-19 pandemic and public health crisis. I submit for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please follow the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky? President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Superintendent Amad? I'm sorry, I'm losing it. Do I have a motion to approve the revised superintendent? Did I, did we take the vote? We did take the vote. We're ready to move on. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent? She goes, is there first? Before, what do you, you have a question? Of which report? We haven't presented. I need, I first, I first need the superintendent to present her report. Thank you.
Good evening. We are pulling up the presentation right now. We can go on to the next slide. And I would like to start with congratulating the 1,976 CPS graduates class of 2021. We had eighteen in-person graduations that took place May 18 through the 28th. I would like to thank the board for coming out to all of the graduations and just celebrating with our students. Best time of the year. To date, we have scholarships totaling nearly $43 million offered to the CPS class of 2021. Summer Scholars. More than 11,500 students are enrolled. We kicked off Summer Scholars last week and it will run through June 30th. And we have over a thousand staff members across the district participating. Just a little sneak peek, we will have our Summer Scholars update at the next COW meeting. Summer is here and we're going to use this time for a block party series. And we are just going to have a good time. And we have those dates listed here, inviting out the community board members, staff members. And we are kicking it off at Woodward High School, June 19th, noon to 2:00 PM. And it's a drive-through celebration. And lastly, our Jump Start program, this is the first time we are advertising it. It will start August 9th through the 13th for our preschoolers and kindergarteners. A four-hour session and we will also provide breakfast, lunch, and transportation. So if you are interested, please call your child's school to sign up. That concludes the superintendent's recommendations. And I also would like to submit the written report for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent.
Don't move.
Yes, is there a second? Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Messer?
I just had, I just wrote one thing after kind of reading through that. It kind of jogged me to something I'd asked for before. But I just want to make sure we were doing exit interviews. You know, I think people join organizations for their organization and they leave because of manager. What I always hear at work. And it seemed like, you know, there are quite a few in not just teachers, but other staff. And so I wondered, you know, when somebody just says, I'm, I'm leaving for personal reasons, like, what's, there's a whole lot of those. So, are we collecting data that might give us some insight into maybe an opportunity for some enhancement?
It is part of our talent department's process.
Okay, and then, so is that aggregated so that, is that like a report that we could see to show like, you know, now we're like in a third year of 20% turnover at the same school? You know, is there like analytics behind that, something that we could see? Is it just, kind of just random? It just kind of scattered all over? How's that reported?
Okay, so good evening. We have been in the process for the last year of doing exit interviews, not with every single employee. Every single employee has the opportunity to do an electronic interview. We're doing sit-down interviews with every 10th employee. So we are in the process of aggregating that data. We would love to be able to share our findings at a later date.
Thank you. Any other questions, comment? Yes, Ms. Bowles?
Enter the superintendent. Do, do we have a copy of those dates? Those dates from your PowerPoint, the dates of the drive-throughs?
And I believe it was sent in an email as well. But if not, we'll send it back out.
Okay, thank you.
Other question? Ms. Wagner? Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, I, but I want, I want to recuse on item H, but yes, on everything else.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
Summer?
Is there a second? Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Messer?
Yeah. There, there's a couple line items in there for marquees for schools. And neither of those are ones that I thought we had talked about already. So maybe those have already gotten. But in this, you know, there was talk that we might be looking at rebranding. There was going to be some branding work to kind of reimagine the, the next iteration of CPS. And I'd hate to like, spend the money now on a couple of marquees that then we have this new logo in a few months that it could be carried forward. And I also think on some of these marquees, as I've looked at them, some say Cincinnati Public Schools and some don't. Some have the logos, some don't. And so, A, is there an opportunity to create some governance? Check to make sure, B, check to make sure that if we are going to do this rebranding work, that it's not like super close that, you know, might behoove us to, to wait. Because I think there's, there's a great benefit of harmonizing the look and feel of this district. So when somebody goes to a building, they know this is a CPS school.
Hey, any other questions?
Well, so I don't know if there's a response to that. But, and then the second, there's one of those items that said amount not to exceed. So I was like, like, is this a big one or is this a little one in one of the suits? We're going to see that.
Do you know what page it's on?
I didn't print the whole thing. I just wrote my notes on the first page because there was so many. But it was, it was a lawsuit, so.
You're saying it was a settlement? Oh.
Oh, so the marquee, oh, yes.
So I don't, I don't know where the marquee, the standardization and the rebranding conversation is. And we can certainly talk about it tomorrow at leadership team and get back to you on that.
I can find it and bring it.
Okay, but in just a general, we use not to exceed when you don't know the exact amount. There are some conditions that may change the value, but we know that it's not going to go over X amount of dollars. But I don't know what the specific project that you're looking at.
I think it was the only one was like a loss.
Okay, what, what?
Going on.
Okay, while he's looking, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I want to second what member Messer has said. You know, I'm the person that still worries about our logo and has for three or four years. But more importantly, that we have these beautiful buildings and, and you don't know that it's Cincinnati Public. It's a matter of people, people don't think they are Cincinnati Public Schools. So I, I think it makes sense if there's that rebranding, if you will, or we come up with the same logo or a different logo, that it'd be standard. But most importantly, that somewhere, these buildings that the taxpayers paid for and we're maintaining, it'd be great to have Cincinnati Public Schools somewhere on it because most of them don't. And if that means delaying it for another month and for a year, do we know what it is that we want to put up there? So if there's some standardization, I think it makes sense.
I just.
So just, the amount not to exceed is at the top of all the award of purchase orders? Because a purchase order is at value that for a specific price for a specific item cannot go above that. Vendor cannot go above that without authority.
Yeah, so those were on the, the marquee one, so that was an issue there. But on page 17, it says, you know, I, five, the treasurer be authorized to approve settlement to the following vendor's consultants, then it says authorize treasurer entered agreement to resolve a lawsuit caption Myers at all. But then I didn't see what the amount is.
Those headers don't apply to that particular thing. It's just a template thing where the, this got, general counsel's item got inserted in. So those headers, the vendor consultant name and amount to exceed, doesn't really apply to that line item. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's a standard on all of our award of purchase orders, but this is.
Okay, well, that's helpful. I thought this is something else and I thought, oh, and there's not an amount, so I, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'm a little bit unclear. Are we asking us not to move forward with the marquees?
Go ahead.
My opinion would be at least to do a checkup for the neck up. Because I think, yeah, people over here, new marquee sounds great. They may not know over here, we're thinking about rebranding. And then, you know, I think, I'd like us to have a policy for, or some guidance for how we show up at a building. Like, it should be without question, every building, including a CPA, should prominently say Cincinnati Public Schools. So that should be a requirement on all. It's called, we call branding guidance document. If we had a branding guidance document, talked about how we label schools, how we, you know, I even had the, the conversation with one of, with our previous superintendent. We had one school that had a team that was refusing to use CPS because they thought it took away from their efforts. So they, they not only stopped using our email, but they took us off their logo in their letterhead. So I think we have to make it crystal clear for everybody that if you're under this umbrella, here are the things. And believe me, that got changed when the superintendent went down to a straightforward meeting there. But having something that keeps everybody on the same page, I think, would be very helpful.
Okay. Was that clear? Okay. Please follow the roll, Ms. Wagner. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Any inquiries and updates? Ms. Bolton?
I'm going to, I don't, I don't think this should be an assignment, someone to make an inquiry. On our agendas, I know in, in my, in my, in my day job, I've gotten in the habit of never using acronyms ever. Even if I'm in a room where I know everybody knows the acronym. On our publicly noticed agendas, could we not use acronyms? For example, CPP, you know, it makes a point of access kind of thing. Like, people see things and they don't know what it means and they get confused. And can we just like have a kind of blanket? Again, I don't think, I don't think this is elevates to a assignment. Could we, could we just not use acronyms? On like a publicly noticed agenda, I'm not saying internal document, but like I'm publicly noticing things. People get confused. They don't know the, you know, they might not even know what IDEA means.
I believe Phyllis Davis is the one who sends out those public notices, so.
Yep. So for Phyllis who's watching, right, no, absolutely, for sure. So Phyllis, hello. If we could just not use acronyms, that'd be great. Thanks.
Yes, okay. Ms. Bolton, you have one?
She's watching. I have something to, to share. It came around, it looks like this, a future table. I know we, it's, it's so confusing. We have a calendar day, a calendar, and we, that it's a year-long calendar. We have a school calendar, we have a board calendar, whatever. But the administration, as you know, and we mentioned this last time we met, I think needs, because they have to send the calendar in for printing, for, for distribution. And so they needed board dates. And fortunately, the board staff put this together. And if you look at it, it holds true to the evening, starting at 6:30, and those are on Mondays. The Wednesdays have now officially become COWs and they are the Wednesday at 4:00. And there's an attempt to try to keep most months to three meetings, which still exceeds virtually everybody else in the state. But we've front-loaded January and what we've done there is not try to have four meetings on this one night because we will have at least one new person or whatever that'll need to be making a speech or what have you. So we're front-loading it too because we're where we are, frankly, post-COVID and in the midst of this, this particular important year. They've pulled out the correct dates regarding Jewish holidays. They've pulled out the NSBA Equity Symposium, the Great City Schools, those things. Leadership in November for OSBA. And there's an attempt here to make it possible for us to hit the ground running. So January is. So January is the one that's very difficult, but that's our work session. And we didn't want to wait till the second week in January. So we moved it from the 10th to the 3rd, I think, is what we've done there. And wanted to get your reaction. We don't have to do this tonight, we don't have to have a resolution. But if people get a chance to look at it and get back to Carolyn or to me or whomever with their concerns or questions, that would be great.
Great.
And again, one, one meeting in, in July. Cows preserved, and most of the vacation time is on it.
So send, send comments to either Ms. Bolton or myself. Okay. All right, Mr. Messer?
Yes, I have an inquiry. This is a topic that was brought to me and I passed it on the administration and I thought it was taken care of. And then I got another long email today, and it's one I find very troubling. And, you know, if I had my way, there'd be no charter schools and all of our kids would come here. But as that stands, some kids are in charter school, et cetera. And as a result, we're responsible for coordinating their transportation. And what I learned from this person who reached out to me is that somebody, the age of my son, Olivier, first grader, is being asked to go on the metro by themselves. And that's the transportation offering that we're giving these children. So I don't want to assume that that's what's happening. If it is, it is something that absolutely must stop immediately. So I would love to inquire about what are, you know, if this is in fact something that's happening, and then how we can quickly resolve that. You know, what, one of the, one of the examples was Hispanic family immigrants struggling enough. And now they're, like, it just, good joke to think about. Now they have to put their kid on this public school bus to get to school. It just makes no sense to me. I mean, yeah, on a city bus, without somebody to train you and blah, blah, blah. So if we could maybe get an update on that, if somebody could look into it.
I sure will, thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very quickly, I, I mentioned earlier when our speakers were here, and I had the opportunity to attend a breakfast meeting with United States Representative Tim Ryan. He and I had a long conversations about the school. And he has an interest in learning more about social, social, emotional learning, particularly mindfulness. And he also wants to hear more about our community learning centers. So I thought, he, I, he got, he has my information and I have his. If the board is willing, maybe he could reach out. He'd love to come down and, he's from Ohio, that he'd love to come down and visit our schools, to, to visit our community learning centers, and might be a good opportunity to partner somehow. This particular event was sponsored and coordinated by the Kernys, so Eric and Jan Michelle. And it was for small business owners, so to speak. And he invited the school, he invited me to the school. So I can make sure that somebody gets, actually, if we want to do that. Might be a good opportunity to get some national.
Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah. Tomorrow and the next day, and then the next day is the NSBA, OSBA Federal Advocacy Week, which is remote, and I know he's going to be one of the presenters. So I think that would be great to have that opportunity. I would suggest that he's partly interested in our community learning centers because certainly Senator Sherrod Brown and even Senator Portman are probably advising him maybe Sherrod Brown a little bit more gleefully. But both of them are big supporters of CPS and particularly the Community Learning Center piece. So that's just a great, I'm glad you had that conversation with him, it's super. And I do have an inquiry that'll follow up, and I think the administration's already working on it based upon what we talked about in SAP. I just need to follow up on if there's, continues to be any wait lists for summer scholars. Or is it?
There should not be a wait list if everyone met the deadline. We had to have a deadline to provide appropriate staffing. However, there were families who came after the deadline. So we are currently looking at available seats and getting in contact with those parents. But we had open enrollment, anybody who wanted to come, we had open doors. But we had to put a timeline on it in order to secure staff.
Perfectly understandable because you can't staff it without that. But that was mid-April, is that my understanding, was the deadline for summer scholars? Just in the future, and we have to staff things. But invariably, some of the families that would be the ones perhaps would come in a little bit later might be the very families that they needed the most. But I totally understand. I think it's a great thing that we're doing.
Okay. Any other inquiries and updates? We could move on to assignments? Ms. Marowski?
My first one is the one we talked about before that I will just formalize now, between now and the June 24th meeting of the Policy and Equity Committee, at which time Ms. Stephanie Scott, Assistant General Counsel, will show us a revised, revised potential mandatory vaccination policy. Between now and then, we'll ask that our community partners, the co-chair panel of parents, labor unions, and Cincinnati Health Department, namely Doctors Amin and Mustman, be consulted for feedback regarding potential mandatory vaccination policy. And then that, that information would be reported out at the June 24th Policy and Equity Committee meeting, which would then prepare us to present it at June 28th to the full board. And then lastly, I used to live in Pleasant Ridge for many, many years. And, and like many of you are familiar with kind of what a nightmare PRM pickup drop-off can be with the highway that is Montgomery Road. This is like thinking way out, by the way. But I was talking with some community members there over the weekend. And it was brought to my attention that the, the old abandoned Quickie Mart across the street and Gregory Forrest Lester's place, he sold it, is going to be apartments. A number of apartments, a couple of the houses are coming down as well for parking. So there's going to be a whole new, like congestion going on. That's already pretty terrible if you've ever been out there, drop off or pickup. And so I'm just, I didn't know if anyone knew. If you didn't know about that, now you know. If you didn't know about that, I didn't mean to tell you something you already knew. But just thinking about, you know, in the past, we had collaborated with the city on some Vision Zero stuff. We had done some other interesting things at the city regarding traffic calming. Of course, we've had an epidemic of our kids getting hit by cars. And I just kind of, I don't even know if this is an assignment now that I'm saying it. But get it on people's radar and maybe for a potential assignment, I guess, in the future of looking at what could we do? Or is it something we'd want to do as far as advocating for traffic calming on that corridor? Because it's ter, it's just terrible. So that's all, I just wanted to bring, I guess there should have been an update, but there you go.
Other assignments, Ms. Bolton?
Just from that angle, remember, we are expanding at PRM. And so we've looked at the property that adjacent is adjacent to it. So perhaps through the administration to be thinking as we go into the engagement piece for PRM, maybe that whole issue could be addressed in that very difficult spot.
Any other assignments? Okay. Having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned. I call to order the June 7, 2021 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge. Ms. Wagner, please call roll. Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers, here. Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Marowski?
Here.
President Jones?
Here.
Thank you. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your request for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school, community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. Okay, I need a motion to approve the following minutes. Special meeting, May 19, 2021. Special meeting, May 24, 2021. Business meeting, May 24, 2021.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four committee reports. Do your best to try to stay within the five minutes. Mr. Messer, please present the May 19 Committee of the Whole Minute Report.
Thank you, President Jones. The Committee of the Whole met on Wednesday, the 19th. Several updates. The first was kind of entered into a new area with health and safety. Superintendent Mitchell informed that the formal health presentations that we had been having will not be continued unless there are major changes in health data. So just wanted to make sure the public knew that. And also that there was an anticipation from the County Health Commissioner that we would be moving to Orange, and I'm not sure if that actually happened yet. But things were moving in a very positive direction. Mr. Gollihue should be commended for all of his engagement with the board and a variety of other groups as we kind of talked about concurrent learning. Had a robust discussion about that, and the superintendent summed up the takeaways. Number one, that relates to kind of our technology. We would concentrate on the Cincinnati Digital Academy interactions. We would move forward with the technology plan, the $10 million investment that was already in place before the pandemic to upgrade our facilities as it relates to technology of the infrastructure. We move forward on engagement at CDA to allow each school to tune in to the classroom and then provide on an as-needed basis, technology to allow students to look into classrooms as well. So that was the summary there. There was a fabulous update regarding the budget. I will save you all the details as there is a enormous amount of data in the slide that Jim presented. copies of that available in the board office. And with that, I present these minutes as written.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing done. Ms. Bolton, please present the May 20 Budget Finance and Growth Committee Minutes.
Thank you very much, I certainly will. Initially, we had a presentation regarding from our partners at Preschool Promise and the dialogue centered around COVID impact, post-COVID opportunities. And then also an awareness that the reserve that has been achieved over a number of years since the beginning of the Preschool Promise selection of revenue, that reserve is going down as we gain more and more students. So that's something for us to consider as we move ahead with our budget as well as their budget. Perhaps Treasurer Wagner will have a little bit more about that. Additionally, we talked once again for the sixth month of the year consecutively, the transportation efforts, which is a $40 to $50 million endeavor on our part with multiple vendors and both Metro and Yellow Bus and Vans Service and Specialized Services as well. And talked about the need for RFIs for at least one year moving ahead. And also the need for greater accountability language in that year that now is upon us as we look to the future, as well as ways to go post-COVID if we can, and what that might mean to the efforts. As well as talking in terms of how we're stacking up against other folks offering transportation as well. We already offer transportation as a more extended basis for no cost to all of our families. And that's something to be considered. It still remains obviously a priority for the board. We also know that the state, in its infinite wisdom, is finding ways to make it more difficult for us for transportation, using Metro or not being able to secure some of the benefits that districts that run their own system, if you will, and have their own fleet. Although we did the smart thing and contracted it out many years ago in order to save money. And in many ways, we're punished for doing that. So it's something to keep looking at, and it is operationally one of the biggest parts of our budget. We also fortunately had some discussion about the need for growth. And again, repeated the discussion regarding Walnut, Pleasant Ridge, Montessori, and Hyde Park. Also started again to talk again about Spencer and what do we do about the Spencer property and the need for moving ahead with grades or not moving ahead with grades, how that will impact the facilities. We had as well raised the issue, and I think it was Member Bates that did this, and that is the Walnut Hills waitlist. And at which point during the meeting, Superintendent Mitchell took care of that situation. And there is no waitlist now, which we were appreciative of. We also, our treasurer began to give us the play-by-play of what the five-year forecast would look like as the whole board had to deal with that just shortly after our finance meeting. And then again, got more specifics about preschool and its expansion, as well as finding a little bit more out about, or a lot more out about where we are with all of our various grants. And again, appreciate this great chart, which is kind of contemporaneous as to how up-to-date it is about the grants that we receive. We also had this treasurer ask us for, to, how shall I say it? Increase the allowance, if you will, from $25,000 to $50,000 regarding contracts being able to move ahead. That is important because since we've now moved our cows, our Committee of the Whole meeting, to non-business meetings, it's, it might down the road or almost instantly create a delay in contracts that might cause us difficulty. The board, the committee would like to suggest tonight that we approved of the moving from $25,000 on contract to $50,000 to take care of that problem on advice of the treasurer. We looked at it for a couple of months and she presented the data. So when we vote tonight for that, I believe that would then move that to a $50,000, at least while we're still using contract language. And I think the treasurer wants to comment on that. We also talked briefly about some chairs at Hughes Alumni. We talked also about parking at Hughes, excuse me, at Taft regarding the FCC games. And then we raised the issue of concerns from the community on the North Side that at least one of the developments that is happening in North Side, some folks, whether it's true or not, have raised the issue that they are finding ways to keep the school district from getting its particular money based upon the city effort. So that's where we are, and I think the treasurer wants to talk about the $50 and the $20,000.
I just wanted to comment that the, you granted me the authority to increase the value in the May 24th treasurer's report. So it's already been approved?
Right.
Okay, so it's, it's going to be approved in the treasurer's.
It happened, apparently.
It was in the last meeting.
Oh, May 24th.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay. Ms. Bates, are you presenting the Health and Safety Committee Meeting Report?
I am, and I will be very brief because we have a pretty extensive summary in your. minutes, but I do want to highlight a couple of items. We had a presentation from the City Health Department, the American Lung Association, and the American Heart Association regarding a tobacco prevention program that the administration will be considering. We also, oop, are you getting feedback or are you okay?
We're okay. Go ahead.
Okay, good. We had a discussion regarding the SROs and the anti-violence initiative that was, both were assigned to the Committee, and I had been interacting with council members regarding this to get, you know, confirmation of data, to talk about, you know, what kinds of initiatives we could collaborate on, pretty much information gathering that we're going to continue. I haven't received the data yet, but I know that Councilmember Kearney is working to obtain data to corroborate some data that is out there in the public that did not come from the district or the city. I've also been in touch with Eddie Hawkins, who's the head of the SROs, and we are going to be scheduling a meeting at their headquarters with members of Health and Safety and two of the Assistant Superintendents. So I will leave it up to the Board to read the summary, to get the full gist of the meeting. I'm sure many of you have already, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, but I present these minutes as printed for acceptance.
Thank you. Do Board members have questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Bowers?
Yes, just to add to the minutes, the Committee also discussed the administration as an action to bring the MOU to the Committee for us to review the MOU at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Bolton?
My question is more of a comment, and I'm not sure of Health and Safety. I know they'd looked at it before, but I don't know if it was in this most recent report. Something we lose sight of is that our SROs are not only serving our particular schools, but they also are serving, they break it down geographically, that they're serving the, whatever schools are within the city limits, and our district is larger than the city limits, that they're serving the parochial schools and the charter schools as well as the other private schools. And sometimes we lose sight of that additional responsibility. I think for the most part, they use our schools as a base, so they're highly identified with us for now almost 50 years, but they're also regionally in charge, if you will, providing those safety services in those other buildings as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, I need a motion to approve the, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't think, sorry. I'm jumping ahead. Mr. Murawski for the Policy and Equity Committee.
Most important committee. All right, I want to make this as quick as I can because one of the Board Matters items is one of the biggest pieces of this. So we discussed, as was assigned, what budget priorities we had as a committee to wit, ensuring the Diversity and Inclusion Manager has a fully funded office and staff to do their work. You know, don't want to have a situation where it's like, oh, we got policy check, we got a person check. Oftentimes, people that are hired to do jobs that big don't always have what they need to do the job, so we want to make sure that that is included in the budget. Creating customized learning and customized professional development, subsidizing Wi-Fi, not just because of COVID, but on a daily basis will need to continue. Expansion of the Digital Academy. And as always, and Ms. Bunty will appreciate this, as we talked about it a lot in student achievement for a couple of years, individualized education plans or IEPs for all students, if we can ever actualize that dream. But I think most significantly that the Office of the DNI person is well funded. We finished our audit of Board policies versus administration. Committee of the Whole, General Counsel is drafting revision of the Board Bylaws dictating the role of Committee of the Whole. We'll have that on June 28. As you know, we've adopted OPES 2.0. Committee Member Bolton made sure that we have language that mirrors OPES 2.0 Ohio Principal Evaluations System in our policies to back it up. So that is going to be presented to us on June 24th. We'll present it to y'all ideally on the 28th. One of the biggest discussions we had that I'll tee up more in depth later during Board Matters is the draft or proposal of a policy that would mandate COVID-19 vaccinations. So I'm not even going to go through that. We can talk about it later. It's like 30 pages of the minutes anyway. Purchasing and responsible bidder, as you know, Board Member Lindy brought this up a number of months ago, and we've been working on it diligently, and I think we're all pretty happy with where it's gotten. I mean, you know, it's forced us to look at a number of duplicative and unnecessary perhaps policies to combine them. They're all listed in here, the five major ones that we've begun combining. One thing I will highlight from here that I thought was notable from Mr. Lindy, we're not otherwise, some language, sorry, some language suggestion, we're not otherwise prohibited by law, every bid must disclose the following. Failure to do so would constitute evidence that is not the lowest responsible bid, and this is the language I want to highlight. A, percent of employees who live in the CPS catchment area. B, whether the bidder provides or contributes to healthcare plans for employees working on projects. C, whether the bidder contributes to employee pension, and D, whether the bidder has maintained or participated in an apprenticeship program. The last piece, Board Member Lindy followed up with, an apprenticeship program that is registered with the Ohio State Apprenticeship Council. And so we will see another draft of this at our meeting, and ideally after this once-long process, be able to present some on June 28th to everybody. Selection of principals was discussed. You'll see that in here, just some cleaning up of language. Other business, I will highlight dual enrollment internally. Ms. Bolton questioned if it was legal for CPS students to go to more than one CPS school. I think the question was probably, you know, I'm born out of the COVID experience, go into CDA and then graduate from somewhere else. And in that discussion came up, what does it mean to be a teacher of record? And this is a fairly long part of the minutes due, I'll let you all read. But at the end of the day, teacher record is a concept ODE developed for the record-keeping system to determine which teacher will be accountable. It became complicated because ODE was concerned that Digital Academy had its own information retrieval number, or IRN, and students were switching from their homeschool IRN. Committee Member Bolton stated that moving forward, we have to make this a seamless transition between this for the new CPS, the new way of education, to be dual enrollment without any of these kind of headaches or loopholes. So as an action, part of the new CPS New Direction Admin will continue the ongoing project we're working through allowing students to do this. We also talked about the Taff High School parking lot. Mr. Hoying will discuss with the Principal Badgett. Family-friendly tailgating, advanced placement. This is the last thing that I brought up. I'm going to go a little over, and I apologize, but I think it's undocumented students, as you know, receive dollars from CP or from ODE to go to our schools. And I think I brought this up at the last meeting and assigned it to policy, actually. But they can't take college credit plus courses because they're undocumented. Now, where this becomes an equity issue and potential maybe legal issue, I don't know, this is what Dan's looking into, is that the college credit plus, you may be aware, has been made a pathway to graduation. And so you have kids who are paid for, you know, ODE money comes to us to them, to a school. This is one way they can graduate, but they're not able to with the same ODE dollars that come to us for CCP. So some teachers at Akin and their college career folks have been paying for this on their own. And so the action that I gave, and then I'll stop. The action that I suggested was that we would discuss this as a full Board and potentially send a request to the state for changes in program requirements, and potentially also look how we could cover a cost for 15, there's 15 students at Akin, there's certainly more in the district. It's not just at Akin. So maybe it's an assignment to figure out how many students fall into this category that's undocumented, want to partake in CCP, but cannot. So General Counsel is going to research the issue to advise us, so we'll probably talk more about the 24th, and I'll be better prepared on the 28th, I think, to actually make those assignments. And I present the meetings as written.
Thank you. Do Board members have questions or comments? Off the report. Ms. Bowers?
Yes, just to clarify, Mr. Murawski, and again, you're going to talk about this on the 24th, that legislation regarding undocumented students is connected to identification. So hopefully, if you find that information about that, it can help me in my world, because that's a barrier for us as well, serving students.
Yeah.
Who are undocumented because of that.
Yeah.
That identification. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that.
Awesome, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, I need a motion to approve the committee minutes as written.
So moved.
Second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Okay. Ms. Amat, please introduce. We have two presentations, so please introduce your first presentation.
Yes, it is with great enthusiasm that I introduce our first presentation regarding the partnership of CPS and the zoo. Ms. Boyle, Chief Communication and Engagement Officer, will introduce our guest. Thank you.
There we go. All right, I got it. I hit the right button. Okay, I am very, very excited to be here today to talk about the Urban Learning Garden at Rockdale Academy. Here with me, I have Stephen Holt, who's the Director of Horticulture at the Cincinnati Zoo, along with Principal Jaren Finney and Chelsea Clark, who is our Global Conservation Consultant. This is a very exciting opportunity. We have tons of great pictures. And with that, Mr. Holt, you're going to do it.
Thank you, Board and Superintendent. Really appreciate the opportunity to talk about this really new, exciting project. It's basically a combination of the Cincinnati Zoo and Botanical Garden in our neighbor, Rockdale Academy, which is literally two blocks away from the zoo. And this is an urban learning garden, and the whole idea is to nourish, educate, and inspire the children of Avondale through horticulture. So the Cincinnati Zoo and Botanical Garden, as the regions leading the botanical garden, it just seems a natural to do this. This has come about through the Community Makeover from Cincinnati Reds, P&amp;G, and also our partners at Children's Hospital. There are many other partners that are helping out, but those are the main four that are making this possible. We have been working with the Community Makeover for the past probably eight to nine years. The zoo is basically their horticulture. We do a lot of the plantings and things. In fact, you can see which great, what great help we have planting trees out there with P&amp;G and Reds. But anyway, it's an honor to be a part of this program. And then we started a long time ago at the, in Rockdale, when we did the Hirsch Recreation Center and Gabriel's Place. That was our original time that we worked with Cincinnati Reds, and since then, we've gone to many other communities, Lower Price Hill, over the Rhine. This year, we're bringing it back to Avondale, which I think is just phenomenal. Here's Seven Hills Project we did down in, over the Rhine. But now we're teaming up with Rockdale Academy. And again, first thing I did when I went over to meet with Chelsea, who actually submitted a grant for a pollinated garden, first thing I saw was the School for Global Conservation, and that really hit me. And, you know, and here we are, the Cincinnati Zoo and Botanical Garden, one of the main global conservation partners in the community. So it seemed like a natural fit. The land we're talking about is about a one-acre site directly in front of Rockdale Academy, on the corner of Northern, Wilson, and Rockdale. And this one-acre site is just bare grass right now, full sun, has to be mowed 31 times a year, and not a whole lot of pollinators, or not a whole lot of gardening goes on in this space. So how can we take this space and really bring it up a notch? So here's our concept. And by the way, on your desks, I added a little pamphlet, so you have to take home with you so you can read it. I have submitted my card with it, so if you have any questions, feel free to email me or call me. But this is part of the garden. It's a very complex garden. It will include a greenhouse, which, if you know Children's Hospital, they're doing a great big expansion, and this greenhouse happens to be in the way of their expansion. So we actually dismantled it. Our facilities team at the zoo took that down, and it is in our back parking lot, ready to be reassembled at Rockdale Academy. That is no inexpensive greenhouse there, and I think we saved it, repurposed it, and through the generosity of Children's Hospital, who actually are on their other site, is going to be looking over this greenhouse from where the building is now, in the hopes of doing, you know, things like hydroponics and other things. So basically, the teachers can teach in there all winter long, so a good space for that. But also, we're going to add a couple Quonset Huts. These are the Quonset Huts we use at the Cincinnati Zoo and Botanical Garden to grow a lot of our annuals and perennial trials, and it's very simple. It's very inexpensive. We're going to put up two Quonset Huts, 20 by 100, and personally, we'd like to grow as much as we can, not only for the garden, but also for the students to learn how to pot up, learn how to water, learn how to grow, and then possibly learn how to sell and make money to put back into the garden, so they'll learn a little bit about entrepreneurialship. This is our annual trials. This is kind of what we foresee. We do a lot of trialing at the zoo. A lot of different companies send us material. We have annual trials, perennial trials. This is a way of trialing plants in a location to see whether they're hardy, appropriate for Cincinnati, but also on a pollinator side, what is pollinating? Bees, butterflies, flies, what are the insects that are pollinating? And that will be a big deal for the kids, to have them come back and see the monarchs that appear in the fall. And just, there's so many stories that can go with this project. It's unbelievable. These are several of the companies that the zoo's working with currently. We put in 30,000 annuals at the zoo. So basically, you can almost consider this Rockdale site, an acre right off the zoo, that's going to be treated like a botanical garden. We will be there all the time, helping maintain, working with the children, and literally using that, just consider it part of the zoo's grounds. And, you know, we work with Ohio State University. They also work with many other universities. We're tied into Purdue University, Ohio State, University of Kentucky, Central State is going to be a partner as well, so there's a lot of things going on. I remember Eve, you came down with a group, and we toured some of the Campbell and Zoo School. I was thinking that this project was going to go, but I didn't have enough information to say, hey, this is going to happen. But, you know, again, it's an urban learning garden. It's not a community garden where you come and grow a thousand vegetables. It's a place where we can show off vegetables from asparagus to zucchini, strawberries. Where do raspberries come from? And they literally will see these plants growing and see and actually taste the fruit off of the fruit and, you know, things like that. So we'll have any native edible trees and shrubs, persimmon, pawpaw, which is a phenomenal plant. Got Chelsea really excited when we had conversations of pawpaw. Service berry, which is in full fruit right now and very edible, almost tastes like blueberries. But all those things that you can grow in your yard and actually eat, literally have food for. But again, there's another one called elderberry that's good for lots of different medicinal purposes. And actually, the students last week did cuttings, and I'm talking kindergarten or first grade, they actually took the cuttings of the elderberry and stuck the cuttings, and we put them in our mess bench. So that's going to be a plant that we're going to put out into the industry. And again, they're the ones that took the cuttings last week. So this is a very great project, not only for the kids, but also for the community. We want to show off all the different careers in horticulture that you can have. So this is a career-building opportunity, and again, I can't think of a better partnership. I'm running short on time, but I do want to just pass along to Dr. Finney and have her give her two cents, and then we can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
The Cincinnati Reds makeover has afforded Rockdale Academy and the
The Cincinnati Reds makeover has afforded Rockdale Academy and the community of Avondale with an opportunity to collaborate and build our urban learning garden, which will provide opportunities for researching, learning, selling, working, and sharing resources. The students at Rockdale Academy have already began in this initiative by landscaping and planting flowers to create herb appeal in front of our school, as well as planting vegetation already and herbs in our back playground area, in our raised flower beds and flower pots. Our instructional leadership team, Cincinnati Children's, Cincinnati Zoo, Cincinnati Reds, Global Conservation Consultant are in the grassroots of structuring our science and horticulture curriculum. We are excited about this wonderful opportunity and hope you can join us on July 29th for our ribbon cutting. We definitely want to thank the Cincinnati Board of Education, Ms. Wagner, Superintendent Ahmad, for this opportunity to share and for your ongoing support. Thank you.
Oh, I just see it on my face. Yes, I am excited about the pawpaws. They will be our next banana. So very excited about that. I'm Chelsea Clark. As they mentioned, I am the Global Conservation Consultant, rather, for Rockdale. So for the past three years, I have had an absolute blast in working with children in developing agricultural and environmental science programs, as well as then outreach for all of our students. And so we do that in a variety of different ways, whether that's working with a lot of different partners or having hydroponic systems inside the schools and then creating milkshakes or, you know, all sorts of different types of food, growing our own herbs and vegetables, and then showing them how to cook them. And now we have an opportunity to actually expand on that educational process with a year-round gardening. So when this was brought to me, after I submitted that grant application, I was absolutely thrilled. And they said, build as big as you can. And so we are going to have a solar-powered greenhouse. So reducing our footprint that falls squarely in line with the fact that we are global conservationists at heart. Our kids are going to be able to come into this space and learn also about how to become an entrepreneur. So as you well know, in Ohio, agriculture is our backbone economically. And it is very, you know, that space doesn't always yield itself to students that look like the ones from Avondale, or girls in particular. And so this creates an opportunity for us to now be able to dig in, and they can sell their food. They can create more community ties and have more social opportunities now that we'll have. We have extended partnerships. And then ultimately, also creating more pathways for agriculture and partnership with the zoo and working with our other surrounding high schools. So we hope to help bolster and help that pipeline so that we can get, we'll have a junior ambassador program that'll help to funnel these kids more so into the lane of ag. And in terms of, of course, it being healthy, we know that Avondale that we've struggled in terms of having fresh access to food and vegetables. And so this is going to be able to be that community mainstay so that we can help invigorate the lives of the families in that field. You know, when it comes to food, food is life, okay? Food is health, learning is fundamental, and passion allows us to deliver on the full potential that we recognize in our children. I'm beyond grateful. I am proud to be part of a project that will truly create lane for minorities and girls to become part of Ohio's next generation of agricultural professionals. Thank you so much, Board members, for helping to allow this process to happen. And special thanks to Dr. Finney for caring through this vision, and of course, the Cincinnati Zoo and Steve for all their tireless efforts and work in changing things, redesigning things, and making sure that it really meets the work of these kids. So thank you so much.
So I'm sure Board members have questions and/or comments. Ms. Bowers, we'll just go around.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chelsea, Mr. Foltz, and Dr. Finney. I'm excited about all this. We just had a conversation in SAC about the green school year and expanding this across the district. And then I was asked a question today, what schools have our focus on environmental? And I did not think about Rockdale, the conservation. I knew about agribusiness with Akin, I knew about Campbell, the ribbon award, and I knew about Pleasant Hill. But I did not know about Rockdale, so I'm excited to hear that in the collaboration with the zoo. In addition to, I'm glad to hear about Central State, because I was just up there talking to them about how to connect with CPS regarding agribusiness, water management, and all of that in agriculture. So I'm excited to hear that. And the only thing I have to say is, Stephen, I need a mask like Ryan. If you can get me that mask that Ryan has on with Fiona, I need one of those. But thank you. I'm very excited about this. It goes along with us expanding to what the green school year. Very excited.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
Yes, I guess what I'm going to say, Steve, I remember that first conversation about this. I was pretty new on the board. And you said, well, while you're here at a committee meeting at the zoo, I have this idea. And I know the superintendent met, and that's how we found out. Somehow she was a farmer. Had a farm or something, and had this whole love of agriculture, which was a fascinating takeaway. But this combines two of my favorite things, CPS and the zoo, actually three, and plants. And, you know, I think you touched on it, Chelsea, but there is a huge equity story here. There's careers, there's understanding where your food comes from, and, you know, I think this is going to be a national story. This will be game-changing, and, you know, I think I share the sentiment with a lot of people. I'd love us to have the reputation of being the greenest school district in one of the greenest cities with a zoo who kind of cut the path for us in Cincinnati. And I think this is absolutely going to get us there. And I can't think of a better pool and a group of students to benefit from this project. I cannot wait to see what happens. So thank you all for the work you put into bringing this to reality.
Thank you. We're going to just go around if you have comments or questions.
Jordan, thanks, President Jones. I just want to echo what my colleagues have shared, and thank you for all of your hard work and commitment to what feels like a genuinely exciting and very different program. As the newest member of the board, I haven't got a chance to hear as much about this in the past. I just wanted to say thank you for all of your hard work, and we're glad you're here.
Mr. Raski?
Thank you all so much. This is awesome. As a proud zoo member, I love the zoo, and I love what y'all do. And every time I take somebody to the zoo, I always brag that due to our partnership, and to echo something Vice President Messer was saying about the national story, like, we have a lot of partnerships to be proud of. The fact that, what is it, over 50% of the employees at the zoo have gone through CPS, and with the program that you have at Hughes, this program at Rockdale, I mean, it's not, it is not normal. And it's really, really special. And so thank you for investing the time that you do. I know the students are going to love it. I can't wait to go hang out there. And just wanted to, again, express my gratitude to all y'alls. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I am thrilled. That greenhouse that we saw was in my backyard and transported over to Avondale, so we already visit. But boy, what an addition for our school and that acre of land. Steve, I do recall that a friend that is no longer with us, Brad Bonham, put all of us together, actually. And I want to also thank Mr. Turner to help us put all of this together. The zoo school's been around for over 40 years, so this partnership is remarkable. But moving into this green and growing, environmental, agriculture, it really is the stream that's capturing all of our currents, whether it's career or college, whether it's cross-generational, whether it's improving our city, whether it's giving kids an opportunity, as mentioned, is an equity issue. This is huge. And with Ryan, I have no doubt that we will be the greenest, absolutely the greenest district within just a couple of years. And we're already seeing that come to fruition. But I want to thank the zoo. I want to thank the leadership, Principal Finney and all, that have accepted this opportunity and embraced it. Because I can remember walking by there that day, and there's a possibility that this will happen between this and then also the great athletic field behind South Avondale. I mean, this is huge. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Really, thank you.
And I'll just close out again with a final thank you for presenting to the Board what Steve offered there. I think I saw something on YouTube, was it, Dr. Finney? That I always watch YouTube, and I always see Rockdale on YouTube. But just very intrigued with what was going on over there. Ms. Clark, it's good to see you again. And I think you said something that struck me. It's about exposure. You know, we expose our kids to different experiences when they're young, you know? And that, we talk about closing the equity gap. That's where it begins. So again, and I thank you for speaking to it, and I just have to say this, and then I'll be quiet. We were invited to have breakfast with United States House Representative Tim Ryan. And Ms. Clark was there, which is where I met her, and was very vocal about what was going on here and what her involvement was. And he actually wants to visit Cincinnati Public Schools to see some of this. And we want to make sure, if we get him here, that he comes to Rockdale to see what's going on down there. So again, thank you so much for this program and sharing it with the Board. Thank you. Great.
And I'm pretty impressed you watch YouTube.
Huh?
I don't even know how to watch YouTube. Like, that's very good.
I don't know about all that, but I might have slipped up on it or something. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bates? Ms. Bates?
Yes.
I didn't know if you had a comment before they leave.
Oh, just to thank them, I mean, I echo what everyone else has said. I don't know what else I can say that, you know, is different, except that this is, it's pretty awesome.
It's awesome. Thank you. I didn't mean to overlook you, but thank you, anyway. Alrighty, great. So we're ready to move on. So Lieutenant Ahmad, next, the final presentation?
Yes, it's a budget update from our Treasurer, Jen Wagner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just here to give you a very quick progress report on where we stand with the budget and our efforts. So just starting off by saying that everything we do, we're doing towards supporting the strategic plan and the five board goals on the strategic plan. Couple key points I wanted to cover tonight was, one, is to talk about the budget target reset. That's based on the five-year forecast that we adopted at the last board meeting. Where we stand today towards that target. A little bit of an update on the state budget and how it impacts next year's budget. And then we're going to talk about some of our major grants and how we're intending to be a consolidated and transparent budget development with some of our larger grants. And so we'll go over some of those and then talk about next steps. So if you'll recall, on this spreadsheet, you'll remember that on May 19th, I shared with you how we came up with a budget target each year. And we came up, based on the November forecast, we came up with a budget target in the general fund for $650 million, based on available resources, cash balance, estimated cash balance, and what we wanted our cash reserves to be. And then as of the May forecast, I've updated that. So we're going to end the year with more cash than we'd anticipated. We're trying to preserve money to help pay for the collective bargaining negotiated compensation packages. And then, so that ends up allowing us to grow the budget target a bit to help support some of the strategic initiatives and increase costs for next year based on growth. So as of today, the new budget target is set at 670 for the general fund. So as of today, we have a budget target based on the May forecast of 670. I was able to determine that there's $6.7 million that I'm going to be shifting out of the current year's general fund into cares. So that will leave another $6.7 million in cash at the end of this year as we close out so that we can use that to then increase that target one more time to 676.5. This morning's budget extract came out at 687.7. And we still have some work to do. So we typically, over the last three to four years, have seen about $10 million of underspend in salaries because we always have a running vacant, number of positions that are vacant. So in the budget, we determine how many positions we need, what their average salaries are, and we budget for a full year with a salary. But if somebody resigns, and then it takes us a while to replace them, or we have trouble placing somebody, and we end up saving money, salaries, and benefits. We also identified another $5.9 million in reductions in cost shifting into other funds that hadn't made it into this morning's extract yet. So that takes our estimated total to 671.8 million compared to the 676 million target. So we're looking pretty good, except none of the collective bargaining costs have been added in yet. And we're going to have to make an adjustment to the school at pool transfer, depending on how some of these things fall out. Moving on to the state. So the state announced last week, kind of throws us for a loop. The simulation came out, Senate Bill 110, simulation came out last week. And according to their simulation package, Cincinnati Public Schools is supposed to be receiving an additional $4 million. So if you recall, the Cuff-Patterson formula would give us $60 million extra or in addition to, which we were excited about to help fund all of our innovative growth ideas. But the state senate is working through their budget bill. The trouble with their estimate, so they estimated the fiscal year '21 general fund revenue is to be $134 million compared to what they're saying next year's budget's going to be, a revenue stream of $138. So it looks like it's a $4 million growth for us. When in fact, the June 1st number-one reporting payment, we're receiving $139 million. So they're already underestimating us $5 million this year. So if they leave it at $138 million, then we're actually losing $1 million. We have a bunch of calls out trying to understand what they're including, what they're not including. There's not a lot of detail behind some of these documentation. So what I could determine was that in their $134 million, they weren't including the special education reimbursement, special education for transportation, or any of the open enrollment data. I don't know why yet, and so we'll keep you informed as to how I learn things. The other significant change to this budget bill is that they're going to take away the pass-through funding for our voucher and community school students and then direct-pay them. So our revenues will go down, but the corresponding expense of tuition will also go down. So when that finalizes, we'll give everybody an update. So this budget, just want to remind everybody, this budget is helping to support the third year of the strategic plan plus our new shore stuff. The first thing off the top are step increases. They're already negotiated into the collective bargaining agreements. So for the current staff that we have coming next year, the budget will automatically go up by $8 million, just because if everybody just stepped up to their next step. We also have a curriculum adoption that was part of the strategic plan. This year was science and world languages. Transportation is returning back to its normal service. We had some savings this year because of blended learning and remote learning. And so next year, we're anticipating going back to normal full-service of transportation. And then we have a list of increases in staff, where I've been capturing them as we've been developed the budget. At the committee, the whole meeting, I'm planning to give you a whole FTE staffing analysis, showing all the different funding sources and so like that. But here's a list of some of the things we've added, 15 teachers because of our growth in enrollment and grade levels. Sat restoring some of the satellite staff. The Promise Center, which used to be known as ADEA to S. Restoring the district-wide mentors that we cut last year because of our funding issues. We've increased reading specialists. We restored them that we had cut last year. School social workers, counselors, adding back the 7th Bellham High School. We had hired 19 and a half more FTEs for that. And then we've added some more strategic positions, adding two more DSLs, the Director of Strategic Innovation, ESL staff members. And I won't read them all to you, but that's about $35 million worth of cost right there. And because we're trying to maximize all of our resources, we have these major grants out there. We are trying to be very transparent. I'm going to share with you the top four grants and their intended uses. So a supplant would be reduce general fund and replace that with the state grant. You can't do that. The only grant that allows you to do that is the ESTR funds, um, because they're helping to help us with our continuity of operations. So I put this little ice cream cone out there. Thank you, Mrs. Bunty. I call it the ice cream, uh, Susan Bunty, um, method. It's where she was teaching me the multi-tiered system of supports and how we're trying to identify all of our financial support. So we focus on the students' needs first. So the general fund should support everything a general, um, Cincinnati Public School student should receive across the board. And then as state and federal, uh, grants become available, then you start adding to and supplementing. So you start with the next group of students. For example, a career tech, um, classroom might need some technology that other students don't need. And then at the top of the ice cream cone is individualized for students who need assistive technology or intervention. So, starting with the first grant, the student wellness, this actually comes to us through a state foundation payment, but they require us to put it into an entirely separate grant or bank account, so to speak. Um, this, our projected estimate is 15, almost $16 million for next year. And we are using these funds to support students through school social workers. We've added 24 for next year. Um, the pre-COVID nursing contract is in the student wellness money. Um, and then we're using this money to expand, um, the MORE program, Girls to Women, Speak Up, Speak Out, the mental health, ACT prep, athletics and nutrition, and then some transportation that goes along with that programming. So $10.4 million is being allocated to student support. And then an additional 5.2 will go to family, community support, which is where we expanded resource coordinator to cross the district. And then, and helping with the, um, families and community engagement department, Project Connect. And then we have a little bit of money in there for staff and social support. Moving on to Title I. Title I's, uh, grant is intended to support disadvantaged students. So our anticipated, um, budget for next year is about $22.5 million. Um, the first section under building support, the 15.8 is what we use to help form the school-wide pool. So all this Title I schools get money. They get a per pupil allocation, and then this is where we refunded the reading specialist and the math specialist. And then under student support, we have, uh, $5 million to help, help us with preschool. Um, the whole preschool program has about five or six different funding sources, but Title I happens to be one of them. And then, of course, to help with the homeless and neglected and delinquent and our curriculum So IDEA B is a fund that's to support being students with disabilities or special needs. Um, most of this is all on top of what we're already providing for in the general fund of regular, regular education. Uh, the $4.3 million is on staff intervention specialists. Some of those are in specialized classrooms and some of them are just for intervention. And the paraprofessionals, um, help to pay for the second pair that's in the autism classroom. And then a, a variety of support for these students and, um, psychologists and purchase services that are specific to the needs of the students, as well as assistive technology. So I'm going to wrap that part up with the fourth major grant, which is CARES. And then we're combining ESTR 2 and, and what we call ESTR 3, but it's America Rescue Plan, um, because those funds tend to overlap and they're going to be used, um, across fiscal years. This is how the budget is shaping up, help us, um, continue our operations and prevent, um, virus expansion and protect our students with health and safety and learning loss. So the first section up there is $31.5 million towards health and safety. Um, the $6 million of that is the expansion of the nursing contract. So the 2.4 was the pre-COVID nursing contract and the student wellness money. And then as we expand it to every school, we're over at $6 million. So the CARES Act is taking the expansion value. Um, $8.5 million of super subs over a two-year period, $2.5 million on extra safety staff. So we had some care professionals that we held on to that helped with social distancing and virus protection. Um, student testing is $2.2 billion for next year. And then, um, $12 million on DPE supplies, um, Plexiglas, just a myriad of things that were driven by COVID custodial supplies. $71 million is targeted to our learning loss prevention. 36 of that is for the summer scholars program that we are now in our second week, I believe. Um, we addition, we added 45 first-grade reading specialists to help with reading. Um, and a little bit of money towards helping to recruit students back to the district, um, online curriculum, and of course, other technology, which is a combination of the concurrent learning cost and the extra devices that we bought last year. Um, is, so you remember the $6 million I'm going to take out of the current year general fund and put into CARES? That was related to the increase in tuition that was caused by us not being in class five days a week. We lost some students into charter schools that were offering everyday classrooms. So I'm going to charge that extra tuition off to the CARES Act. And then the loss of revenue, if you recall, in May of 2020, the state cut us $8 million. This year, they gave part of that back, but we haven't received the rest of that revenue loss back, and I'm allowed to use that in the CARES Act. That explains the $6 million. Then we have another $5 million in facility upgrades, um, just across the district, um, and some money to put towards staff support. So out of those two brands, CARES 2 and CARES 3, we've allocated $115 million. The total allocation as of today, 296.9 million. I was, um, informed today that our CARES Act 2, the $93 million one, was reduced by $600,000. I have no idea why, yet, but I will. Um, but anyway, so that, when you combine those two, 296 million dollars, we've allocated 115. That leaves 181 million for future years, for '23 and '24. And we can target those for the facilities improvements that we've been estimating for Pleasant Ridge, Hyde Park, Walnut Hills, Lighthouse HVAC, and then an HVAC ionization project. Mr. Boliver can tell you all about it. That's about 46.5 million dollars. And then we have, we'll have some recurring expenses, like what do summer scholars look like next summer? How much more equipment are we going to have to buy and technology that we'll have to pay for? But that still leaves us with $90 million into the next year. So we're not done. We will be engaging, doing some, um, public engagement on these budgets, but we're, it's a fine balance trying to figure out what grant to put all these things in and to, um, help balance all the budgets. Just want to remind you of this slide, that it shows you when the CARES money goes away, we're going to make some tough decisions. I keep calling it the cliff, even though our public affairs department doesn't like me to use that word. Um, but we're going to have to make some tough decisions about the things that are being funded by CARES Act, or they're going to stay. And if they're going to stay, what are we going to cut in order to pay for? Or how are we going to fund them? So that brings us to next steps. We have two more meetings to deal with the general fund operating budget. Next, next week will be the Cow depart, uh, sorry, Cow meeting, as we can go into a lot more detail and discussion on, um, more specifics on, I'm hoping to prepare an FTE analysis, so a personnel department, uh, budget, um, what we've done to close this budget gap, so you know exactly what we're cutting, and then a comparative analysis from one year to the next on, by object code. So like, how much do we spend on mileage this year versus next year? Or salaries versus one year to the next? And then by budget center, so that you can see how much money was in the schools or within individual departments. Soon as we do that, we're going to refocus our efforts on rebuilding the new budget process for next year. We're still planning to follow the Cuff-Patterson model versus the current model that the Senate's looking at, because the Cuff-Patterson model puts the needs of the students first in terms of funding. So it actually breaks up the budget, gives you a percentage of guidelines for us to look for in terms of direct classroom instruction, student support, building leadership, and district accountability. With that, I will pause and answer any questions you might have. Or if members have questions or comments, Mr. Marowski?
Thank you, President Jones, and thank you, Treasurer Wagner. I appreciate all the time that you've put into this, and my, my brain is already thinking about some of these amazing things we're able to do. Like, summer scholars come to mind over and over again. I just, I just, I love it so much, and I'll, I'll leave it at that, or I'll go too long. With the curriculum piece, um, the science from world languages, which I was familiar, is there, is, uh, that Black history, um, or anti-racism curriculum, is that included in this?
It is part of our general fund, I believe.
Okay.
Because it's a part of our core one.
Gotcha. Great, awesome. I just want to, awesome, I just want to clarify. Thank you. I think I'm good for now.
Okay. Other, Ms. Salas?
Yes, thank you, um, Treasurer Wagner. And I agree with Mike, summer scholars is very exciting right now. People are very excited about it. I'm glad to see that it's a possibility that we'll be doing it again next summer. Um, I just need clarification on the, um, pre-COVID nursing contract. Then, is that the regular school nurse that we, that you're talking about, that that will continue?
Yeah, so in fiscal year 19, the nursing contract, I don't remember how many there were, but the, the budget was about $1.7 million. When we got the student wellness money, we were able to expand it to 2.4. Up to where we are now at 6.6, um, is the, a nurse in every school building, not, so with some schools shared nurses, and I don't know if this Bunty can offer more specifics to that.
And that was before the, the COVID?
Yes. So I just took the, the difference between COVID, or the, what we had before COVID to what we are now because of COVID, and I put that money into CARES, while the student wellness still funds the pre-COVID contract.
Okay, so before pre-COVID and before this, Assistant Superintendent, if I can clarify, we had healthcare specialists or something versus the nurses. Well, so we're not going back to that. We're going to still have, even if we share the nurses, going to be a regular nurse. Is that what I hear if, after the CARES Act money, it kind of drifts away?
We have decisions to make once the CARES Act money goes away, is what that looks like.
Okay, I just want to clarify on that. And then for the program support, can you clarify what that mental health part is up under student wellness? What, what exactly was that?
Bunty, go again. I don't have that line memorized. You're talking about under student wellness budget?
Yeah, student wellness projected, um, it looks like page nine, maybe?
So some of it was professional development support for our staff, mental health, first aid, paying for trainers, extended time for things.
Okay, good, thank you. Other questions? Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. I appreciate the comprehensive approach to this. I have, uh, great reservations about some of it, uh, not because any of it's bad, but my reservations are just for us to remember that, as I think Treasurer pointed out, this really is about two years, because it'll be this coming fiscal year and the next one that we have CARES money for and then not have CARES money. So we have to be careful how we decide, because we don't necessarily want to delay the tough decisions for other boards, because that cramps their style. I am concerned that, um, I would, and I think you mentioned at the very end, Jen, that to find out what we're not spending, I'd like to see that list. I'd like to see the list of what we've cut from what the request was, but also, when we made another strategic decision about reading specialists several years ago with Mrs. Ronan, as I mentioned, I think in the Student Achievement Committee meeting, we decided not to do something and use that money to make this incredible strategic decision about third grade reading. When you make these decisions, it can't be just tactical or answering needs. We, our money is so precious, although we have this, you know, flush of money because of CARES and the COVID situation, we have to make decisions that are more strategic. We have to make the dollars kind of count what best possible. Um, I'm worried that our bureaucracy is starting to feed itself. We have been a very thin bureaucracy for almost a generation, and we've expanded it, rightfully so, but I, I want to really see if we can do a double check on that expansion, because that's what bureaucracies do. Mrs. Bates has a master's in public administration, and she'll tell you that as well. Um, I do think we're not spending enough on facilities in this arrangement, and to the degree that we're allowed to spend on them. I think it would be great, because those are more one-time, not staffing. I, I worry, um, too, that I want, I don't really, we, I thought we solved the problem about, and I think I see it in the budget, that when you and, and, and Laura kind of created the, uh, the My Tomorrow piece of enlist and enroll and, uh, employ, we expanded our scope. So employment has become, not maybe is as important or as primary, but that whole idea of employment and enrollment is, is, uh, is part of that whole mantra. And I want to see more of that within this, if possible. But I, I admire the comprehensiveness of this. But I also worry that because we have it, doesn't mean we have to spend it. And I see a little bit of that emerging. Um, what we're spending on is great. I don't have any complaints about that, but it has to be strategic, uh, moving forward. So I look forward to the next couple of meetings and times, and I'm interested as to what does still need to be cut to make this fiscal responsible. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into it.
Thank you. Mr. Wendy?
Thanks, President Jones. I want to just echo what everyone shared about, uh, gratitude towards our treasurer for the, the presentation and the work that's gone into this. I, I know that under even normal conditions, whatever that means, this is a busy time of year and it's really hard. And then couple that with all of the changes, plus COVID, plus this enormous influx of cash and the new requirements we're implementing for that, it's just a lot of work. Thank you.
Never a dull moment.
What's that?
I said, there's never a dull moment.
Never, never a dull moment. Um, I have a, I have a couple of different questions. I think, um, I'll start with the, I think the most important one for me was something I brought up last time, which is that I think before we, I guess, I have a question about timing. Um, my understanding was that we don't have to submit our plan for the Recovery Act funds until a little bit later on, like August, or even September possibly. Is that right, not right?
The, some of them, yes, but in order for us to start spending ESTR 2, we've already spent down ESTR 1. And we're using ESTR 2 to help pay for summer scholars. In order for me to pay those bills, I have to have an approved budget by the ODE. The American Rescue Plan is the one that has, um, is due in August.
Okay. And, you know, there's, there's some requirements there around community engagement and stakeholder engagement. Is that, is that something we're going to talk about at a later date?
Yes. We'll share with you, we have some ideas on how to do that, working with, um, public affairs on how best to do that, with some experiences that we've had with some of our other grants. And so on Wednesday, we'll give you an update.
That's great. I just think it's really exciting and a real opportunity to engage community members in the shape of this plan. I think where I was going with it is, is a huge sum of money. Uh, and, and one thing that feels really important to me before I would go to approve something, is that we tie it to some specific outcomes that we want to see with children. So that, that, you know, we're going to spend this $290 million, and as a result, we expect to see student achievement go from X to Y, or, um, outcomes around social emotional wellness that we care about go from A to B, um, but, but really to get clear on what are we going to see as a result of the investments that we're making. Um, and I think that that, is that, is that part of what we will get to at a later point?
I don't think it's hard to identify what indicators we anticipate to improve, but to actually put numeric values to individual things is harder to do, because there's so many things that influence one measure of performance. So it might not just be the reading specialist that improves academics. It could be the reading test scores. It could be the new curriculum. It could be the pair- reading test scores, it could be the new curriculum, it could be the pairs in the room, you know, there's a lot of things that factor that. So we're really struggling with this how to measure return on investment for those things, for that very reason, but we're, we're working through that, making good progress.
I think what I'm imagining is something that is, you know, somewhere between perfect science predictiveness and total aspiration. You know, it's the middle point between that. You know, like, we, we've really thought about it, we've really looked at where kids are, and we think that this set of outcomes would be in line with our values, and we think we should go for it. I think it's an opportunity to try to be inspiring and say, you know, with a once-in-a-generation investment in funds, here's the difference we're going to make in the world. And we don't know if we're going to get there or not, but we're going to try. And I think, I think that, that when we get to, before I can vote for a final version, I'd really like to see something like that in proposal.
Got it.
I think the other stuff I had are smaller things, which, which, which I can email about. I think the other one I did want to bring up tonight was, have, had, have there been consideration of whether part of our plan could involve some one-time bonus payment to anybody who worked in a school building during this last 18-month time period? It just feels like a really, I'm getting looks from my colleagues, which makes me think there's something.
You're tiptoeing the negotiation strategy, and I'm not sure that we would want to talk about that publicly at this point.
That actually is a employment official topic, so I would not do that here at the regular business. And I've heard that question, you asked the question before, but I think in a different sense.
So I'll, I'll follow up then, because I, I think I'm still plugged in for an answer. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Morosky.
I just had a quick follow-up. Thank you, President Jones. And I wanted to give Treasurer Wagner a moment, if, if you want, to talk about kind of some of the engagement that was done with this, so like all the money that came in, like engagement with teachers, staff, community members, et cetera.
So at the last presentation, we did list a, we had a list of all the activities that had come to that point, so there were town halls, employee engagement meetings. I didn't repeat that slide tonight, but I plan to do that on the final presentation in June, to kind of put the whole package together. And so I will bring that, I'll update that and bring it back.
Great. I just, for the edification of the 74 watching, maybe a handful or more of them didn't know that, so I just wanted to give you that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Just a quick follow-up. First of all, I appreciate Mr. Lindy calling it once-in-a-generation, because it certainly is once in a, two decades, whether it's 25 years or two decades. That's why we, we have to be very careful how we spend this and use it. But the more important thing is, one of the things I like about this budget, it isn't necessarily in tonight's presentation, but a couple of presentations ago, the administration actually said, here's how we're going to measure how we're spending our money. And frankly, that's the first time in 13 years that I can recall that there was that kind of list. So I applaud the administration for putting it out there, whether it was the first grade reading or whatever, whatever it was, there was a list of almost eight or nine things that we, whether it was the maps or F tests or whatever, but I thought that was a, that was a breakthrough, and we probably didn't make enough of that as an important thing.
Yeah. And go ahead. I was just going to say, I forgot to, and yes, we did use that tool to help us prioritize some of our things that we were going to fund, or maybe shave off or whatever, but, so thank you for reminding me. And then I failed to mention or to remind everybody that we don't have a $300 million bank account of CARES. We have to spend the money first and then ask for reimbursement, and that could cause a huge cash flow problem if we spend too quickly.
And I just wanted to add, as we close, and, you know, the finances part, I leave that to sort of the finance whizzes around the table, but I will say relative to Mr. Lindy's comments about looking at the measures and, and how do we know that we're achieving what we said, and how do we prioritize, coupled with Ms. Bolton, who was saying, you know, in two years, we have to decide where we're going to cut. Since I, my experience has always been here that we struggle with that, to be honest. We struggle when it comes time to make serious cuts, we struggle with that. But I've heard us say, I've heard this board say, we got to focus on it now, so I, I think we have to remind ourselves to bring these indicators up, these measures, these outcomes, and we have to be comfortable with the fact that everything that we are doing now may not succeed, and we have to be willing to say, well, it didn't achieve our goal, so we need to let it go. And, and that is going to take a few years to get that done, so, you know. But I appreciate this, very thorough, very comprehensive, and I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have a comment? Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Okay. So we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Consistent with the board's bylaws, the board has the ability to limit the hearing of the public on any single issue and will exercise the right to do so if needed. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information, if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your compliance. We reserve the right to not permit you to speak if you do not comply. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. Okay. You ready?
Yes. Our first speaker this evening is Elena Thompson, followed by Sue Mangan, followed by Jen Jarman. Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Hello. My name is Elena Thompson. I'm an attorney at the ACLU of Ohio. I'm here for the third time today to ask you to remove police from schools and expand existing restorative justice practices within CPS. These asks aren't novel. Even in Ohio, CPS can look to Columbus City Schools as an example. Last summer, Columbus made the decision not to renew its contract with the Columbus Police. It replaced police in schools with unarmed security and expanded restorative practices. I'm not saying that Columbus is perfect. For one, theirs is a temporary solution to a systemic problem, but they're a good model for where CPS can start. When Columbus students spoke about the permanent developmental harm that they faced because of police in their schools, the Board of Education listened. They didn't ignore the issue because it's uncomfortable and upsetting, which it is. They faced the data and they put students first, and most importantly, they gave them a seat at the table in discussing these issues. Both the CPS School Board and the superintendent here have the power to suspend this contract. At the very least, the Cincinnati students are owed a safe environment while the district investigates these discipline disparities. We've seen that black students in CPS see discipline five times more frequently and more severely than white students, and disabled students are more likely to be punished than their able-bodied classmates. These disparities are some of the worst in the entire state of Ohio, and I'm not exaggerating when I say that. More than 90% of SRO arrests and interactions are within CPS and to CPS students, not to non-CPS affiliates. Our data came directly from you, the federal government, and the police. Each of these numbers is a student's life who is permanently and negatively altered because of how CPS administers discipline. This district has a duty to investigate and put a stop to this harm. There is a better way. End the police contract and expand restorative justice now, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sue Mangan, followed by Jen Jarman, followed by Danita Parrish. Go ahead, Ms. Mangan.
Okay. I'm doing this right? But it, let me see. Okay, well, is this right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I'm very inspired by the gardens I heard about going on over at Rockdale. CPS has always been doing creative and interesting things, and I think it's very unfortunate that we don't get more support from the state. It's, it's discouraging to hear in the budget that we're not getting the, I think she said 60 million that would have come through Cup Patterson, that we're only getting 4 million, and, and that's going to, you know, Cup Patterson was such a great opportunity, and it's just being watered down by people who appear to be interested in giving vouchers across the state to every, every individual, whether they go to a private school, public school, regardless, even if they're already in a public, private, I mean, a private school and have never had any intention of going to a public school. Public money is, is in the hands of the wrong people when it comes to education. There's a lawsuit, I don't know if you're aware of it, that is being filed to protect this situation. Hopefully, it'll go before the Supreme Court, and they'll rule against this excessive taxpayer use of public funds to pay private school tuition. And Columbus City Schools just recently announced that they're going to join that lawsuit. So I, I'm wondering how much you're aware of it and how much consideration you've given to joining that lawsuit. I think it's really important for the future of city schools, not just here, but all over the state.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jen Jarman, followed by Danita Parrish, followed by Christopher Moldrow. Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Jarman.
I'm sorry?
We can't hear you, Ms. Jarman.
Okay.
Jarman, and give her a chance to try to work out her microphone. Our next speaker is Danita Parrish, followed by Christopher Moldrow. Go ahead, Ms. Parrish.
My name's Danita Parrish, and I am a parent of two Walnut Hills High School students. I would like to talk about the issue of police in schools. I've done some research, I've done some reading, and I understand and listen to arguments about the harm that is caused by having police in schools. I can see what going to school and seeing a police car outside your school communicates to students about how the district sees them, because we know when we call the police. We call the police when there is or we're expecting a crime to be committed. I know that some on the school board have had questions and issues with the data. So let's say, although I don't believe this, let's say that the data is off, and maybe Cincinnati is not the worst large school district in the state, and Cincinnati just has regular old, everyday, American racial disparities. Is that okay? I'm going to say it's not okay. If Cincinnati's racial disparities in terms of police intervention in schools is slightly better than Columbus or Cleveland, that's not okay. So I've heard and been convinced by the argument, we do not need to criminalize students. But I have not heard any arguments about how having police in my children's school helps them. I haven't heard how, what they benefit from that. I haven't seen any data about what good it is doing to do that. I haven't seen anything that says.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parrish. Our next speaker is Christopher Moldrow, and then we'll go back to Ms. Jarman, and then, followed by Yusuf Manir. Go ahead, Mr. Moldrow. We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Nope, we can't hear you. We'll come back to you. Ms. Jarman, you're next, followed by Yusuf Manir.
All right. I'm not quite sure why we can't hear. Can you please, do you have, we can see your face. Click on the camera icon and unmute. Okay. It says you're not muted. I don't know what, I don't know what's going on.
Sorry, Ms. Jarman. We'll go to Yusuf Manir, and then we'll try Mr. Moldrow again.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Yusuf Manir. I'm the president of Young Activist Coalition, and I'm a recent CPS and Walnut Hills High School alum, best school in the state. I'd like to talk a little bit about violence, because Ms. Melanie Bates mentioned wanting to tackle violence. I want to talk about the fact that you all are allowing violence to be inflicted upon children every single school day. You're having a little bit of a break now, because kids aren't in, in-person schooling besides Summer Scholars, but every single time you let a kid have a negative interaction with a, a cop in your school, that is violence. Every single time you let a cop with a gun, with a baton, with a taser into your school around the children that you are responsible for, that is violence. Do not lie to yourselves and pretend like it is anything different. Every time you give a kid a detention, a suspension, and an expulsion, that is violence, because it makes them multiple times more likely to end up being funneled into prison. But that's what CPS is really interested in. They're interested in maintaining the violence that has always been there, not the violence that they can see like, like, things that happen, like stabbings, that happen every once in a while, but they're very, very invested in maintaining violence against the black and brown students, the students that are arrested twice every single school day in CPS schools, the violence that lets kids be funneled into prisons from a young age, the violence that is 100% racist, and that is why you all are so comfortable with that violence, because it's not affecting the white kids. It's not affecting the kids that you all believe that you are solely responsible for. It's affecting the kids that you fail every single day, the kids who face violence that that is beyond evil, and you all watch, and you all let it happen. You all look at kids, you all look at the fact that kids are being arrested.
Thank you, Mr. Manir.
Thank you, Mr. Manir. Our next speaker is Christopher Moldrow, followed by Julie Sellers. And we can, we can see you.
We're still having trouble. We can see you, but we can't hear you.
You're unmuted, so apologies, Mr. Moldrow. Our last speaker is CFT President.
Good evening, everyone. I was just, this evening, I wanted to talk to you about the two charter schools that are coming to Cincinnati. They are out of the IDEA charter chain in Texas, and I have been speaking with the president of the Texas Federation of Teachers, and these are not high-quality schools. And so CFT is going to willingly go out and help recruit students back to our district who may think that this is an opportunity for them. IDEA is not a good choice for Cincinnati. There has been way too much corruption, and I have documentation of how poor they are with the management of their schools. They have been having charges of financial mismanagement, hiding mismanagement, deceptive practices, they have teacher evaluation investigations going on, they fired the CEO, they fired the COO, and this isn't what our students in Cincinnati need. Our students in Cincinnati need quality public education as their option. These charter schools are not quality. And so we are going to have at least 20 teachers going out and speaking to parents to let them know why CPS should be the option that they want their children in. I know that in the past, there have been charters who've wanted to come to Cincinnati, and with further investigations, we found out that they were mediocre at best, and they all had problems. So I don't think this is something that the people of Cincinnati should be supporting. And just like Sue Magnin was talking about the vouchers sucking money from the district, currently, the charter schools also will be sucking money from the district. So that is something that I think that we should all be, like, really thinking, how are we going to reach out so that they understand that they're not going to a better-quality school? And I know that none of you, or most of you, haven't been involved in that decision. But if you know people who have been involved in that decision, you need to tell them, no, this is not the time for us to do this. I do agree completely, this is on another topic. I do agree completely with Eve Bolton this evening, when she was talking about not neglecting the facilities and making sure we have investments into the facilities. In Cincinnati, through the Facility Master Plan, I believe that we have some of the most beautiful buildings of any urban district in the whole United States. But they are at the age where they are going to start needing some tender, loving care in order to keep them at the same quality and the same safetiness that they are right now. So the facilities, there are facilities that still need a lot of attention. And while we have this one-time money, we need to make sure that we are also investing money into our buildings to make sure that they are not neglected and that we keep them at the quality that they are. There is, for the Rockdale presentation this evening, I am so happy, because when I was a beginning teacher, I worked at South Avondale, and it was under the National Science Foundation grant and a zoo partnership at that time. Our kids were so fantastic in science and horticulture and all of that. And Rockdale, at the time, they had, every day, they had classes at the zoo. And it was a great partnership, so I'm really looking forward to this. I would like to speak, and I don't know if the gentleman from the zoo is still currently there, but I would like to speak to him about the possibilities of maybe doing a partnership with the trades here in Cincinnati to help with some of the construction that's going to be going on with the building at the zoo. I wanted to also know if the SRO's meeting is going to be open to the public, because that is something that we would like to be involved with. And that's enough for me this evening.
Thank you.
Will somebody get back with me about those two questions? Hello?
You have to, you have to put your questions in the chat box.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, is that it? Okay, so we'll move on to kudos. Anybody have any kudos? Mr. Messer?
First, kudos to everybody and anybody who did anything to get summer scholars up and running. While the neighbor kids were talking about these camps they were going to, and we told our kids they were going to summer scholars, and we were a little nervous. They came home thrilled after that first day and every day since. They mixed up the teachers, it was a different experience that way. And we are just so thrilled. And it's not just, it's the games they were, it's like they were having this reading game. This is all gonna help kids in the long term, so I just want to say thank you for that. I want to give a shout-out to all my LGBTQ+ brothers and sisters and our allies for Pride Month. I do hope that when we have our new diversity office up and running, we start some employee resource groups, resource groups, that might even connect then to students for mentorship, et cetera. But it is a month of celebration, and something that I have absolutely loved about being on the board is having fellow members of the community and allies, people, children, et cetera, connect with me and seeing some of them even as recently as last week at the graduations. Excuse me. And then last but not least, in celebration of Pride Month, one thing I do is, it's weird, but I read the obituaries of the New York Times. And it's a fascinating way to learn about people who've really made a difference in the world. And there was a woman, Kay LaHusen, '91, who was one of the most powerful women. There we go, much better. One of the most powerful women in the LGBTQ+ movement, long before Stonewall, long before Pride started. She was one of the people who helped to get being gay-removed from being a mental illness. And as you read through this, you found out that in 1948, she graduated from, right here at CPS, at Withrow. And she credits her experience in Cincinnati, and specifically, her experience at Withrow, for projecting her into the world. And so, you think about kind of the CPS archives of, you know, people that we put out into the universe that make a difference. She said she realized that she was gay in her pre-teens. And so, I think about all the kids today that have come after her, and what an impact she's made in the world. So Kay Tobin LaHusen, who graduated from Withrow.
Thank you. Other kudos? Okay, so we'll move on. Ms. Bates, are you doing retirements tonight?
Yes, I have a few of them. I have two teachers who are retiring, Gina S. Clisatell and Julie L. Stallworth. And from our civil service personnel, Patty Holmes and Lois Moore. So we thank them for their service of many years to our students and our community, and wish them well in their retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay, so moving on, we actually have three ordnators. Hopefully, they're not extremely long, but it doesn't matter, we gotta do them. So we'll start with Mr. Maraski, potential COVID-19 vaccine requirements.
Thank you. A lot of coughing going on. Hopefully, I will be coughing too, but-
I didn't hear a word you said.
No, it doesn't matter, it wasn't important. So this is important. So we discussed at our policy committee last meeting, the potential for a policy that would mandate vaccination, COVID-19 vaccination for staff. Not with the intention of bringing something today to pass, but just to talk about it. We thought it was, you know, an important thing to bring up. So Assistant General Counsel Stephanie Scott presented to the committee a draft, which you had at your seat, with some red-line items that we added at our meeting after it was presented. She reported she was not able to find a public school district that had instituted a mandate yet. There are several colleges that have, I know my nephew is at one in Alabama. And this draft policy, just for everyone's knowledge, is pretty similar to those collegiate ones. The draft language is created based on EEOC language. So, for those who don't know, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission language. So, the language regarding if you have a religious exemption that's not political in nature, et cetera, you don't have to get the vaccination. Committee Member Bolton thought it was a good start. She questioned, and I thought rightfully so, the use of the word employees, and you'll see in here we broadened that, so it's not just employees, it's folks who may be volunteering in our buildings or people in our mental health partners who are our employees technically. Committee Member Lindy questioned if there are gonna be potential healthcare privacy issues, to which the answer was no, but if the policy would be controversial, and I think obviously the answer to that is yes. Ms. Scott reported employers are legally permitted to request the info, et cetera. So you see pros and cons in your board minutes, I won't bore you. The fact that this is new, a precedent-setting policy, if passed, Mr. Hoying stated it's important to know what we may be getting into, have an eyes-wide-open approach. I asked the administration, what was our percentage of employees? Do we know? That we have not, but we don't, we haven't asked for verification. However, given the number of vaccinations administered, it seems there's probably a lot. Then I'll speed it up here. Mr. Hoying pointed out, individual determination is key. Committee Member Bolton suggested the first line of defense is communication. If we are to do this, of course, there's a need to have it in place in order to give a notice to current employees. I suggested, there's some urgency in this, as the next school year is gonna be tomorrow, right before we know it. So you'll see a timeline, June 7th today, as best as a full board. June 24th, present a revised draft policy from our Policy and Equity Committee meeting, which we'll discuss, which we would then bring on June 28th, or maybe not meeting in July, for passage from this body if we decide this is something that we should do. So the action that was taken is all on those lines. So in front of you, you have a couple things, and then I'll pause for discussion. Thing number one, of course, is the meat and potatoes, the proposed policy. You can read it there, you can see the EEOC language. Political beliefs are not sufficient reason to request an accommodation. Religious beliefs are, or disability, or medical exemption. Employees who cannot receive a COVID vaccination due to medical reasons can request an exemption under the American With Disabilities and Ohio Civil Rights Act. One other note I would like to point out, the language that Ms. Bolton encouraged. So you'll notice it says district employees and co-located partners. That's how we kind of covered that base. Employees claiming one of these exemptions must submit a completed request for accommodation. Accommodations will vary depending on specific limitations, et cetera. On the back of that policy, you will see a memo that was sent to me as policy chair, and I asked it be printed for everybody. House Bill 248 has already been introduced in the Ohio State House, which, you know, in some ways, maybe makes this more pressing if we wanted to go this route and adopt a policy like this. Representative Jennifer Gross of Westchester, she's in, I believe it's '54, '52, '54, either way, state rep, recently sponsored a bill that I think has had a hearing, actually, already, that would be known as the Vaccine Choice and Anti-Discrimination Act. It really, really, really expands the EEOC definition. Basically, if you don't want to get a vaccine, you don't have to, is what the bill would say. Furthermore, employers would be not permitted, under this new bill which came law, to request that employees who were not vaccinated wear a mask. And so, that's happening right now as well, for further context. Lastly, editorial comment on my own, I've done some digging myself, and there was some question, the federal level, whether or not this was possible because of the emergency status of the vaccination. If you could mandate something that was in, like, emergency sort of status, but you can. So that got thrown out the window, because that raised the issue for me, because if that was the case, then this would be total conversation that never had to happen. But you can. So we can do this, it appears. Dan Hoying is here, I think, you know, to offer, he's certainly more of an expert than me. But there it is, and I'll leave it at that for discussion.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thank you, Board Member Maraski. Just had this conversation with someone the other day about mandated and not mandated. The concern that I have about the co-located partners is the undue burden that it would put on those agencies. So a lot of them, when you refer to mental health, that are nonprofits and finding staff to replace them, they would do that. So I'm trying to find out that collaboration or what that would look like for the employers of that staff, and where does that conversation come in as a prerequisite? Because a lot of partners have not mandated this as an employment status, and what that would do, and how that will affect the services of students, and that agency or partner trying to fill that spot for that worker.
Okay. Yeah. Any other comments? Mr. Lindy?
I was not gonna respond to it, Pam.
If you, I mean, I can. I was just gonna let folks talk about it. I mean, we, considering they're coming into our buildings, if this was written in the policy, then they would have. Now, if they didn't want to, then they wouldn't, you know, obviously, they wouldn't have to, but then they would not be able to be in our school buildings.
Right, but my question is, because there are already MOUs, this is a change from what the original agreement was. And so, because that's not in there. So my concern was, where's the conversation with that partner just being transparent and saying, this is what we decided as a board? So now, if the staff is saying, no, that you can't be in, it seems like there should be a little bit more collaboration and conversation about this topic.
I totally, I totally respect that. The only thing I would say is, we do this all the time with other things. I mean, and I respect that. I'm not saying we should just go, like, guns to blaze and do whatever we want. We should, obviously, we need to go to partners. But I do, I mean, I also think there's kind of a sense of urgency if we want to do this. So we may not, and then in this case, it doesn't matter.
Mr. Lindy?
This was a point that came up during the policy committee meeting, but I wanted to bring it up again here. I think for my part, I'm very open to doing this, but if we do it, I would like to do it with a broader group. So that we have people who are teachers, who are parents, who are part of community organizations, all saying, we've looked at this, we think this is the right thing to do for staff and for kids, let's do it together. And the nice thing is, I think we have time to do that. It's June 7th, and we've got, you know, some time before next school year. So I'm open to be wrong about this, and we welcome disagreement. I think my current position is, it seems like a great idea. Let's bring in some other people too, to see what they think, and see if we could roll it out with a larger group.
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think from a public relations piece, it'd be great to have our union leadership standing with us. It would be great to have our partners that have helped us through this COVID experience, whether it's children's, or whether it's the health folks that have helped us from the city or from the county. And in answer to, and I think that makes sense, this is gonna be historic, for sure, if we do it. And to Pam's point, I think that's reasonable. We amend those kinds of MOUs all the time. However, I think it would be more than reasonable for us to provide the opportunity for the vaccination to take place here. I mean, we've become experts, rather than putting it on the partner or the participants, to do it themselves. And certainly, with our school-based health centers that we have, and a nurse in every building and what have you, that would reduce the burden, I think that would make sense.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Board Member Bolton. And I'm not saying that it's a burden for the agency. My concern is for when agencies are hiring, these are prerequisites for staff that are working in schools, because that's a wholly different line of conversation, because that may impede on the current staff that's in the school that may not be vaccinated from that partner. So that partner would need to know, or our community collaborator would need to know that this is a prerequisite. When they're trying to hire people, then they need to be replaced. So it's not a due burden, it's really them understanding what is expected for this position, for this particular position, and being a collaborator in that, understanding that this is the expectation.
Okay, Ms. Bates, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I kind of, Eve said what I was about to say, and I think that this requires more collaboration with the unions at last count. And I don't know what the numbers are now. It's, you know, the teachers were getting vaccinated, but the paraprofessionals weren't, and the lunchroom employees weren't. And I don't want there to be a division or discord, and I don't want to risk losing employees. You know, we've held on to our Ask Me employees for this long, and I don't want a situation where the union isn't on board and, you know, we're losing employees and, you know, that are difficult to replace.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple things. One is, was this, was this like a sign to the policy committee? How did it even come to our attention?
We had talked about- We had talked about it in policy and asked for, and it was in the minutes, we had talked about it at a full board meeting a couple times too. And I know I talked about it the last meeting, noted that at our, whatever the date was of our last policy meeting, we would see the first draft. So something, it came up in policy.
It came up in the board, because I think I raised it several weeks ago, or even a couple of months ago, and I think then the board decided, they, remember, I can't kind of remember, I was sitting over there, and you said, where would it go? And we kind of said, I guess policy, I think we initially said health or safety.
Okay, that's fine. I do, I think I'm agreeing with what I'm hearing a couple other people say. I'm not sure, my personal opinion about it is, I would love to see everybody voluntarily be vaccinated, but I have concerns and questions about any legal implications. If people just adamantly refuse to take it, what are some of the legal concerns about that? And can we force it based on federal guidelines or standards around that? Yes, Mr. Hoying? While he's coming, I, I like, Ms. Bolton, what you said, it's, it's like, if we do agree to do this, we would really need to have all of our unions to support this. And I honestly, at this point, I don't know about in the future, but at this point, I'm not sure if we could get that level of agreement, but.
Real quick.
Yeah.
It was the May 10th board meeting, it was assigned to us.
I believe you. Okay.
So the question is whether it's, it's legal or not to require it. There's lots of different lenses under which it could be looked, but the EEOC has issued guidance saying that provided you make accommodations for persons with disabilities, provided you make accommodations for persons with religious beliefs that would conflict with having the vaccine, that under that lens, it could be legal. There's lots of other, that the unions or a group that could challenge it as a charming condition of employment, there are individuals, there's privacy issues. The best way for me to tell you whether it's legal or not is to show you lots of other examples of school districts or employers that have done this, and there's just not very many. So it's not to say it couldn't be, we couldn't be among the first, it's not to say that we wouldn't be fully defending this policy, but are there potential legal risks? Of course there are, anytime you're first.
Okay. Mr. Messer?
Do we require, and I, sorry Jimmy, Jimmy does all that with the kids registrations, I have no idea, but is there a requirement for like vaccines for students?
Of course.
That's what I thought.
Yes, now, the one difference is, those are largely mandated by public health law, state laws that, and so.
But in that case, is there an exception for religious purposes?
Okay, I was up here. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So is, are you thinking or that this should be prepared for a pool, or ready for a pool at the next meeting? Or, or is there another step before that? I'm hearing Ms. Bolton say, maybe if we could get people to come on board with us, it might be a lot easier to pass this. I don't want to pass this and require it, and then we have a fight on our hands, if that's the case. I don't know.
My suggestion would be, again, it doesn't have to be adopted, but at this point, it seems like it would be a waste to not see it, at least to the end, and it doesn't have to be adopted, of course. I mean, between now and the 28th, I don't agree that there is a tremendous amount of time, because again, we're not meeting in July, and New Chief Orientation is right around the corner, and if we want, if this is going to happen, it has to be done June 28th. And I don't think I'm making up that sense of urgency, and so if it's, if it's going to be done, again, it might not be done. So if, if I may suggest, and I mean, should know what my course, Policy and Equity Committee colleagues think, and everybody else, that between now and the 24th, when Ms. Scott will have another version of this, it seems that there is fairly unanimous agreement that the labor unions should be consulted about this. I agree 110%. So if that's a, I don't know, that's a job for general counsel, who that is a job for, but I think that that would be a good idea, so we could have that feedback on the 24th. Again, I'm looking for my colleagues' nods or disapprovals. And then also, to Ms. Bowers' point, you know, the broader, broader community, I don't know exactly what that would look like, I mean, maybe, you know, just key partners in our buildings, I think community learning centers, et cetera, that seems like an awful lot of legwork, whereas the labor unions, maybe not as much, because there's fewer. But that would be my suggestion, is that we move forward with having a new version presented by Ms. Scott at the June 24th Policy Committee meeting, and that between now and then, that some of our labor, or all of our labor unions would be consulted about this, and so I'm hoping to feedback on that.
Anything else on that? So your, your intent is to have it ready for our next meeting?
For June 28th, yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm a little scared, but it's okay, I'll deal with that. Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. Mr. Maraski, this is a yes-and, I like everything you just said, I'm wondering if there's a way we could engage parents in addition to the labor groups and other community stakeholders. Makes me think of the CoHere panel that I think CPS has, and is there a way to, you know, take the temperature of a, of a handful, or take the temperature to get a perspective, I think, from, from some parent stakeholders?
Sure, I think so. Yeah, and then also, hold on a second, I forgot something, and then if you had anything to add, that'd be good too. Lastly, I think also, Ms. Bolton was talking about the Dr. Mustman and Ameen at the Health Department, and some of our friends there, and like, what would their opinion be on something like this? And I, so I think, I will specifically call out Dr. Ameen and Mustman at CHD. I'll make this a formal assignment when the time comes, but right now, I have this CoHere panel that we kind of have on hand of parents, we have our labor unions, union leadership, and then of course, Mustman and Ameen at CHD.
And your community partners.
And so, and that's, and that's, so I would need some help on that, because again, that's a, that is a lot of people, I agree. What's that?
I can't hear you.
If we're talking about a change in MOUs and things like that, you're going to have to talk, you're going to have to get them involved. I mean, this is a big deal for some, for some partners, especially mental health partners, as well as community learning centers, agencies.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any, well, anything, I was going to ask, anything else about this particular board matter? Okay, all right. So if we move on to CPS CTP, a while ago, and I want to say back, oh my gosh, I can't even tell you how long it's been, we did agree that we would pursue scheduling another collaborative meeting, which we do on a quarterly basis, with Cincinnati Preschool Promise, and I've not reached out, we, we were just too busy, I'm sorry, we were busy, they were busy, so I did not call. But I think that I want to put out to the board, whether, what the board's thoughts are about scheduling that, it actually is not our turn to do it, it is their turn, except they don't have the space, so in essence, we'd be hosting it if we did it, probably. So I wanted to ask the board if the timing is right, or if we want to put it off for a little while longer. Ms. Bolton, I see your hand.
I, I would like us to schedule with them after we are in person.
Well, that was, that was the intent, yes.
I mean, yeah, I think that, so that's, you know, not going to happen before August, but yeah, this is, it usually takes this long for all of us to, to get the right date anyway, but yes, I think that'd be a great way to almost, you know, besides opening of school, I think it would be great to.
So maybe sometime in September, which is sort of the last.